Appreciate that. I will now open the Estacada City Council meeting. If you please join me in the political meetings.
Our limitations to the law of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I have roll call please?
Counselor Blevins.
Here.
Counselor Dossel.
Here.
Counselor Hill is absent. Counselor McElroy.
Here.
Counselor Metcalf.
Here.
Sir Ten Bush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwine.
Here, thank you very much for that. Okay, we're at the first citizen and community group comment. I have one that wishes to speak right off the bat, Dawn Ginjal.
Yeah.
I was, I was afraid I was gonna mess this one up, so appreciate that. Go ahead and step up to the mic right there.
Hey, I just had a couple of comments, well, one's a question, the other kind of a comment. With the influx of, of population that we have in Estacada, we've noticed by, by my place there on Broadway. I live right on the corner of Fifth and Broadway. That we have about one out of every ten to twelve vehicles. And they turn on Sixth on to Broadway, they hit the pedal to the metal, and by the time they hit my place, they're going forty or fifty. And I'm just kind of concerned because we have kids that cross that street coming from school, school. And plus, we have several small kids that like to ride their bicycles in the street, what have you. So I just wondered if there is a way that, some way that we could get something put together to where a reduction in the speed in that street could be done. I don't know, but you know, whether it's a speed bump or additional signage or what, but you know, something needs to be done because I'm just afraid there's gonna be a kid that's gonna get hit.
I appreciate your concern on that, and that is something we've been looking at all over the city with the increase of people driving and everything. This is something that is now on our radar, and we appreciate you bringing that forward, and that's something we can look at.
Absolutely.
Going forward, maybe posting speed signs more visible with lowering the speed in the neighborhoods. We've talked about that as being something that we'd be looking at, so.
Well, because the one speed limit sign twenty-five miles per hour is just as they turn off a sixth on there, so he gets missed.
Yeah.
So maybe just moving that down next to the next block, you know, would probably be more effective, especially like the ones that are up there by the LDS church or that, so they've got lights flashing.
Yeah.
Make it more noticeable. The other question I had is, does the city have an ordinance about motorized bikes on being on the sidewalk?
That's a good question. Have we put that into our codes yet since they've come out with the motorized bikes? You know, that's a newer thing.
I don't believe we do, but there is probably a state regulation on that. I know that Deputy Hatton had talked to me about that because he was concerned there's rules about helmets or the age of who can be riding one of those on the street. Then we could, we could look into that and put out some information about it.
Okay.
Those kids wish by our place on the side, they're doing a good clip, so I just kind of worry about that as well.
All right, well, those two great things we can put on our radar now, so now we'll be looking into them, we appreciate that, so thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
You betcha.
So I'll look into what the rules are for those, and then, and we could probably do a speed study on that section of Broadway to see what's going on there and identify some situations.
Right, thank you. All right, moving forward, that's, do I have any online that wishes to speak now? Okay, so we are at the consent agenda. McElroy is asked to recuse himself from that. So can I get a motion for the consent agenda, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
I have a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much for that. Moving along, we are now at the department committee reports, city managers report.
Okay. I have a brief slideshow up there. And also want to pull it up over here. All right, just a couple of slides tonight. First of all, I forgot to pull it up, and here we are, we're moving right along. All right. The first slide there, I just wanted to report that the city, working through our thriving communities program, selected a contractor to create a pedestrian and school zone safety action plan. This is something that Elena especially has been working on, and I really appreciate her work on this. This will include field evaluations as well as stakeholder and community engagement in this plan. It's in the school zone, especially focusing around River Mill School area. And the next slide. The final plan will outline safety issues, proposed, have proposed improvements, prioritization and implementation strategies, and we'll work with the school district on the start date and the implementation of, of this project. It's funded through our grant program, so it will not have a budgetary impact, I don't believe it's passed through. It's, they, it's just funded directly, and it did go out to a competitive bid, we received three proposals, and so there, I did not include the name of the organization that was chosen, but it was a nonprofit and should be, it's really specifically what they do, so should be great. And then my next slide is just a quick update on our outreach for a permanent city attorney. We really appreciate Carrie and Missy taking us on as interim. It's been vital to have them, but we, we posted the RFP, a request for proposals on July thirty-first, and they're due on September third. We're gonna schedule council interviews for any people who send us proposals at your first meeting of September. And then, and you can deliberate, you know, after those interviews, or you can just, you know, speak with the candidates, and then we'll actually make the decision on September twenty-second because I thought it might not be something you want to interview them and immediately make a decision. So we'll come back, you can do your interviews, discussion, but we'll come back and at the second meeting in September, and you can do some more deliberation and make a decision, recommendation, and we'll work on getting a contract together, and then that, hopefully we'll have the contract approval be, in front of you to be approved by October thirteenth, so.
Is that, that deliberation, is that something that might need to be done in executive session or just?
I don't know about that.
I think you would do it in open session.
Okay. Thank you.
But I just thought you might want more than one.
Yeah.
More than one needing to deliberate. Okay, and that's all that I wanted to share tonight, although I do appreciate everybody coming out to the, and you might speak more about it later, but our groundbreaking for the wastewater treatment plant was really exciting. I appreciate everybody's attendance. Any questions?
Is the RFP per flat rate or is it hourly? What's the request for the pay structure?
It would, we just requested, we just put in there for that they notify us what their pay structure is typically. It's hourly, it's very, I know we paid Peter, like we were kind of, he's on retainer. That's very rare, actually, so they won't include that in their, that information in their proposal.
All right. And that's all we have tonight.
That is all I have.
Okay, we are at the committee commission and Lee's own reports, do you have anything tonight, Jerry?
Um, I just, I just want to reiterate how, how, how amazing of a job the downtown Estacada, Estacada Commission did with both the fourth, with all of their events that they, that they've helped lately have just been outstanding, and they've improved over, they've improved every year since this group has been involved, and, and again, the Arts Commission, Arts of the Creek was a, was a huge hit. And I just look forward to continuing working with them and what they have coming, what they have moving forward, arts, the next event for the Arts Commission is the Christmas tree lighting, oh no. Yeah, Christmas tree lighting, and the next event for downtown Estacada Commission is Oktoberfest, so I'm really excited about those two events.
Anything else from any of the groups?
I don't know anything from the group, but it was nice, got it to make it out to the National Night Out, and that was nice, a lot of good information down there, so a lot of good folks down there.
Great. Anything else?
Nothing new from the committee, but we have more traffic and safety concerns coming in quite regularly.
Okay, great.
So library board, every meeting, I'm continued to be impressed with the amount of things they're doing out in the community, it's just incredible. On the twentieth or on craft night, they, there's all sorts of different things like this, but on the twentieth, they're doing, a craft night, they're doing tie dye. And I just remember doing that in the sixties, it was a ton of fun. And then on the twenty-seventh, they have a guy, David Buggney. And the topic is how our library was made, and my understanding is that he was involved from just, from the very beginning. And then there was a conversation about the collection, you know, how they choose what goes in and, and into the collection and that sort of thing. And, you know, I had some questions, like how many new titles per year are they adding to the library? What, how can people donate to the library, that sort of thing? And then for me personally, you know, some of this technology working with in my car, you know, ways that I can listen to like a book on tape or something like that, I mean, if it's a CD, I can handle that, but anything else, I can't. You know, because I need to be able to answer the phone and, and that sort of stuff. And so I asked about maybe training for people like me so that they can more fully utilize the, the things that, that they've got in there.
What's that mean, people like you, John, I mean, we're old. We can't pick up on stuff, I just want to clarify here because I might need that same class. All right, Jonathan.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, this is not a committee specific thing, but this is an update, and I don't know who listens to this thoroughly or thoroughly, so we'll just put it in this part so it doesn't get missed, but we had a very lively conversation last city council meeting, going back and forth about Hillway and the extension and speeding in town, and I do want to tell the community, yes, sir. I do want to tell the community that myself and Melanie and Dawn, and then Jim was still in town, I think he's on vacation right now, but Jim, the, the chair for the Traffic and Public Safety Committee, we went and we walked and talked and looked at Hillway, and there should be some plans being presented to the city council to move forward to make some suggested corrections from that. So I just, I want to tell the community that you could hear that there's actions being taken, that your staff, your leadership, they came, they asked to meet and walk with us, wasn't something I requested, I was approached and asked, so I just, I want to demonstrate that to the community that there is change kind of.
Good, thank you. Appreciate it, well, that kind of leads into your, your example, so we appreciate that, huh? You're not the only one, so thank you. Okay, is that it for? Okay. We are now going to go into the public hearing, so I will now close the city council meeting and open the public hearing. We open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero four in order to submitting Title sixteen development of the Estacada municipal code. Do any members of the council wish to abstain or declare ex parte contact? I'm not hearing any, so the council will now hear the staff report on this proposal, so I will hand it off to you.
Okay, and we have on Zoom with us Grace from Winterbrook Planning, and she will be presenting the, she'll make, make the presentation, and then we'll go, I think there's probably a lot of comments that need, will want to be made from the community in the public hearing and council, and we'll try to go straight down the list of, and not bounce back around, bounce, bounce back and forth, but we'll turn it over to Grace for right now.
All right, Grace.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
And you're seeing the slideshow?
Yep.
Awesome. All right, yeah, I'm stepping in for Alan, who's out this week, and presenting on the staff report for the proposed cannabis and the M-one zone code amendments. So, city council has heard a number of complaints of the nuisance of cannabis odor, and in spring of this year, directed staff to propose some options. And in March, they reviewed the proposed potential solutions and council-directed staff to draft these code amendments that you're looking at today. And we had a planning commission meeting in June where they recommended approval of the ordinance twenty twenty-five zero zero four. So in short, the proposal would prohibit new cannabis production and processing businesses within city limits. Existing businesses would still be able to operate and would become non-conforming under the code. It would also revise the operational and licensing requirements for existing cannabis production and require things like odor control, that sort of thing. And to look at this code amendment, we have to consider consistency with statewide planning goals, the comprehensive plan and the development code, which we will review now and has been reviewed in the staff report. So first, the authorization to initiate amendments. City council directed staff to pursue these code amendments in spring this year, this is met. And then regarding the procedure, the code amendments go before the planning commission, who makes a recommendation to the city council, and they must include findings to establish consistency with the comprehensive plan and the development code. And so we've had the planning commission recommendation to the city council, and now we are at the council hearing. That is met. And then regarding findings, the staff record, report includes findings showing consistency and conformance with municipal code and conference plan. And this provision doesn't apply because there has not been a previous denial of a request within the same year. So regarding approval criteria, we have to show consistency with applicable statewide planning goals and applicable city goals. So procedurally, there is a statewide planning goal and city goals for citizen involvement. This code amendment was initiated after a number of complaints about odor and other things relating to cannabis production. And this code amendment also includes public hearings and notices which have been sent out to the public and has been duly noticed, and this itself is a public hearing where we will hear testimony from the public. Statewide planning goal two requires consistency between plans, and the findings demonstrate that consistency to make sure the plans don't contradict each other. And then agency coordination, any affected agencies have been noticed regarding this code amendment. And I'll also note regarding citizen involvement, we have received written comments that are included in the packet, one in favor and two opposing the amendments. Both of the opposing comments cite the loss of revenue, and then another opposing comment raised a number of legal issues that might be repeated in testimony, and Missy, the interim city attorney, is here and can address some of those in more detail if desired. And then there are many non-applicable goals. This code amendment does not change any of the underlying land use designation for any of the zones, and many goals are not applicable to their request. Applicable goals do include the economic development goal, which relates to statewide planning goal nine. And the city has a couple of policies that relate to that, one policy being policy four, which says the city should retain suitable industrial land for industrial purposes and limit retail and other potential conflicting uses in industrial zones to support industrial area businesses. The second policy that's relevant here is general policy six, position Estacada as a supportive and responsive business environment. So this, this amendment was in genesis because of persistent nuisance odor issues that were generated by cannabis production and processing. And the city council has determined that the production and processing of cannabis conflict with the other uses allowed in that zone. So in, by eliminating the allowance for those uses in the M-one zone, this would limit conflicting uses in that zone and are therefore consistent with general policy four. And also by responding to complaints of nuisance odor interfering with business operations in the city's industrial zone, policy six is supported by these code amendments. And that concludes the findings portion of this, and as I mentioned before, in June, this went for the planning commission, who made the recommendation to the city council to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five zero zero four. I want to make note that since that planning commission approval in June, there has been one change to the proposed language in the ordinance, and that language should be in your packet. It relates to provision sixteen point six five zero two zero K and zero three zero G four. The provision repeats twice, and it's regarding entry for inspections. We made changes to that code provision to ensure consistency with constitutional rights under the Fourth Amendment, and those were revised by the city attorney to ensure that those would be legal and protect those rights. So you can let us know if you have any further questions there. Still allowing inspections for business licensing, but making sure that their constitutional rights are protected. All right. So next steps would be any questions that you have about the staff report, and I know, I think we will have some public testimony. And again, our interim city attorney, Missy, is here and is very familiar with any legal issues that may come up and is available for questions as well. And then after that, there will be council discussion and then the decision to approve, approve with conditions or deny with findings.
All right, I will read a statement first before we continue. Okay, the statement about evidence presented at the hearing, an issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final eventuary hearing on the specific application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba at or on that issue. Does any member of the audience wish to speak on this, and I have a couple of speaker request forms here, so I'll put those out first, or did you want to speak prior to that?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, that was, uh, thank you for reading that. This is a common source of confusion, but when it's a legislative code amendment, those statements don't apply. So the raise it or wave it concept doesn't apply.
Okay.
For Luba, but it's, it's good practice because I got a feeling you're gonna have to read it sometime.
Several times. Go ahead.
So first of all, were there questions from the council before we have public testimony?
I, I think it would probably be better to go into public testimony and have proponents of the amendment speak first, and then opponents speak next, and then we can have council.
Questions and discussion.
Okay, so I have a couple of request forms here, and they were purposely for that.
Do we have any proponents? Are they all opponents?
Opposed, yeah, I've got opposed and Amy's the other one, is she opposed or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're both opposing.
Yeah, I don't have any other ones besides that.
Okay. Bring Amy in first, okay. All right, so we have Amy Margulis, she also printed her comments and provided those to you.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I'm.
You're there.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Drinkwine, city council, my screen is flashing, so I just want to make sure that you can see me, even though now I can't see anybody.
Oh, we can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, thank you for taking the time to listen to a series of comments that I have. I have submitted written testimony and public comments, so some of this will be similar to what has been submitted. And I'm here, I've been a lawyer in the cannabis industry since this was called something other than a cannabis industry. I've done this work for over twenty years now, and I'm here representing a client who's asked me to speak on the proposed ordinance. I have a few particular issues that I want to address, and I want to start talking about, about the effect on license transfers. Part of what is in this proposed ordinance prohibits the issuing of new cannabis licenses. From our perspective, given the OLCC licensing process, this would be considered a taking, and let me tell you why. The OLCC requires for a change of ownership for the new owners to be issued a new license, unlike in other states where a license is transferred as is. In the state of Oregon, new licenses need to be issued, and because new licenses need to be issued, and because this ordinance would prevent new licenses from being issued for processing and production, and my client is a processor, this would almost entirely prohibit them from selling their license. And I know there are business people on the city council, and I know that the city council knows that people build these businesses. My client is a small business owner and runs a family-run business, and that people build these businesses so they can support their family, so they can eventually sell them, so they can create wealth for their family and for their friends and their community. And in this case, should this ordinance pass as drafted, and it prevents anybody really with a processing or production license from selling it, they would lose all of that investment. And the courts have found, and I put it in my letter, and I won't go too much into it, the courts have found that the taking of the economic value of businesses through an ordinance like this would in fact be considered a taking, and it's something that the client and I have talked about quite a bit, and I've also spoken with the city attorney about. For, from my perspective, it is a, would be a serious consequence, and I'm hoping that the city council reconsiders the language around this in particular, so we don't impact these small businesses that make Estacada a great place. Second, the overly broad administrative inspection, I, I don't know exactly what got changed. I went to go pop in very quickly to see what the language is, but I want to talk about this in case it's still pertinent. And I understand the city, the city attorney, maybe because of our communications, has made some edits, but as I read the language in the ordinance, the inspection is extremely broad. It allows inspectors the authority to enter any licensed marijuana business at any time without notice to inspect equipment and operations, and I will tell the city council that the courts and case law frowns one hundred percent on this kind of overly broad government interference, and I, I hope that the city council too would understand that allowing a regulatory, regulatory authority, even if it's a local government regulatory authority, to come into your business at any time with no notice to inspect is a broad overreach. And so I'm hoping again that the city council does not allow this ordinance to pass with that language. I'm not sure exactly what has been changed, but if that language is still in there or something related to that language with this kind of no notice inspection, that if you don't consent, and I, in the packet, it still looks like that to me.
Amy, Amy, can I excuse you for just a minute? You're past your three minutes, can you wrap up really quickly with your main points, and then we'll discuss those concerns later?
My final issue that I want to bring up is that the planner testified about the economic goals and that the, the motivation for this and the cause for this was the odor issue. And I do want to remind the city council, which I'm sure you know, is that the odor issue has been addressed through additional ordinance changes, and because of that, I think there are some issues about whether or not these achieve the Estacada city council's required goals if those have already been fixed by another ordinance. Thank you for your time, I'm here to answer questions, and I've also provided longer testimony in my written comments.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next I have John Sampson.
Is that good?
Yes, perfect.
Cool. All right, well, wanted to say thank you for providing the time for me to speak in front of you guys. I am a local business owner here in Estacada, I've been here for eight years. We were probably the second, I think, building in Estacada, you know, park. We are cannabis processor, Buell Extracts, we've gone from zero employees to over seventy-five employees to date. Probably one of the larger processors here in the whole state. And this ordinance actually kind of came to a huge shock to me because as a city, you guys have been nothing but supportive to us and to our family, everything we've built out here. We've invested, I'd say. We've invested, I'd say, a substantial amount of time, energy, effort, and money into this community. And for this to kinda come as a shock to us is, you know, we, you know, it feels like we're being attacked personally. And that is, we've been here for this since two thousand seventeen, so eight years. I almost consider this my second home. We spent so much time, a lot of nights, you know, we were out here with the fires with you all. So um I guess just kinda to tell you what my largest concerns are about this is just the absolute financial impact that it would have to our business. You know, much, I know many of you guys are business owners and something like this coming down onto your business and people try, you know, it almost feels like you're trying to take something away from us. And if anything, we've been trying to be an absolute upstanding member of this community. To the point that the state regulatory agency uses us as a training facility as a role model, what we should or should not be doing. And um, yeah, that kinda is a little uh impactful, so. Excuse me, but the uh I guess uh I would strongly urge the council to kinda seek alternative solutions and probably not hinder our business as much as it has over the last couple of months and as much stress. I'm sure you guys are kinda sick of dealing with this as much as we are as well, so. Um, I would just ask that you kinda invite us. We have an open dialogue and we can discuss probably the best ways about proceeding rather than kinda blanketing a lot of these things without any, you know, real consideration to how it's gonna affect, you know, potentially seventy-five to eighty people within your community. So, um, I guess uh all I had to say.
Alright, and that's all the forms I have during the public hearing. Are there any other? There, okay. So at this point, uh we proceed uh at this.
How do you hurt, excuse me?
Yeah, how would we proceed from here?
You can just have discussion.
Okay.
I think without uh motion, I believe we're just discussing.
Alright, Jerry, you have something?
Yeah, so I've been thinking a lot about this um over the last while. And I feel I've, you know, I know that the city staff has put a lot of time and effort into this, but um and I don't want to take away from that, but I feel like we're taking the easy way out. Um, I, at the beginning of this, I thought we were gonna put, you know, more regulations, you know, more regulations on this. I didn't, you know, expect to completely just cut it out of the, of the city. And uh, you know, be- between the tax dollars that we lose, um, the value in the business that the, that the business owners will lose. And I'm talking about the people that, it, it feels like we're punishing the people that we're doing, that we're doing things the right way. Um, you know, not just the people that were doing it wrong, but we're, we're punishing the good businesses that, that, that are in there that are, that we're doing it the right way from the beginning. Um, and uh, you know, I just, I, I I think that we need to revisit this, we need to relook at it and um, you know, I, I don't like the fact of just taking all the value out of uh, out of something that someone has put so much money, time, effort to, you know, this, people build business, businesses so they can retire. You know, and if we take, if, if we take all the value out of it by not letting them sell the business, um, you know, then you know, that's taking away, taking away their, their future basically. So, and I just can't see, I, I, I don't want to be a part of that, so. Uh, that's, that's how I feel, so.
Alright. Uh, anybody here?
So. Does our ordinance uh specifically prohibit transfer, transfer or sell of an existing business?
No, so uh C- uh Counselor Dolezal. The ordinance itself doesn't speak at all to the transferability of the O L C C license. So, under the ordinance, existing businesses would become non-conforming users and continue to exist from a land use and zoning perspective. It's the state regulatory overlay that um restricts and prohibits transfers of licenses. Much like uh for liquor licenses. If a, if a zoning ordinance amendment uh prohibited, you know, bars, let's say. Uh, it wouldn't, the, existing bars could continue in that zone, but the O L C C overlay, I think, I'm not completely familiar with how uh liquor is regulated, but um, I think the O L C C licensing is what would prevent those businesses from continuing.
So is it possible for an existing business? And I thought I read that if they quit doing business for a year and a day, then that was done, but if they were th- if they were sold it or, or whatever to another um uh owner uh and but continued doing business, um can it be construed as being a continuing thing?
That's what we used to.
Yeah, so under, yes, correct. Under the city's zoning ordinance, yes. The issue which, you know, Ms. Margalis has, has raised accurately is that uh cannabis is really highly regulated in Oregon. It's something of a, an experiment still. And so anytime the ownership of a existing cannabis processor or producer changes, that new owner has to obtain a new license. And the new license requires a land use compatibility statement, a LOX. And so that is where the hook is, that would prevent an existing this uh processor from continuing to operate. Now, I will say, the statutory uh scheme does provide statutory non-conforming use protection for existing producers in O R S four seven five C point zero six three. And so, existing producers would have statutory non-conforming use protection for their licenses, but that does not extend at this time to processors. So it's the processors who would really be caught up in this.
Though, could, just, could we word our ordinance so that so that uh, you know, Building A has been doing cannabis, whatever they're doing um and, and can continue as long as there's someone conducting that business and allow for a new license if it's a new owner or something like that?
No. Because the city's regulatory jurisdiction over cannabis kind of ends with, at the land use, with the land use component of it, so the city could not step in and, and override the state and how the state regulates license transferability.
So I'm not talking about that. I'm just, because what I, I think I'm hearing is that this ordinance um would not allow an existing business to, to sell to someone else. And so what I'm asking, is it possible for our ordinance to say an existing business can continue with a new seller and a new license um at that one, at that location? Can, can we word our ordinance that way?
Uh.
So that it's not taking from someone that had built up a business?
Uh, yes, it's, basically that's the way it would operate now because it, of the interplay with your exi- your ordinance in the non-conforming use section of your ordinance. But the O L C C would not give effect to that. They, the O L C C would not say, well, becau- you know, because your zoning ordinance says this, we're gonna go ahead and issue this new license. They have their own, you know, let me tell you, five hundred pages of, of licensing regulations.
Yeah, if I could speak really quickly, if, if there's any way we could find a way to do what Counselor Dolezal is recommending, it would be great. We may need an executive session for certain things.
Um, right.
But our intent, I believe the council's intent was never to take away the existing businesses there. It was to just restrict any more from coming in. Um, I will say that folks that are out there now running their business have been really good, um, you know, conscious of the community they're in. And they've been good to work with. They work with our code enforcement staff really well. And um, but in the past, we have had some significant serious issues. Um, so we'd like to, if we could like stay where we're at, let our current businesses continue to operate, which I think is what was intended. Um, and then they could sell when they're, when they want to sell, they could renew every year. Uh, but we wouldn't have um any new sites coming in, but I don't, there's not necessarily a way because O L C C is gonna override us no matter how we set up our land use. Is kind of, I think, what is happening.
Is there anything preventing the existing businesses from moving to a new location?
No, there is not.
So they can transfer their license to a new location and where, I mean, like when we were growing as a business, we moved for our business from one location to another. And our business is, uh, just a place to operate out of. So if they built a substantial, successful business and there's value in the business, they can transfer that business if they want to keep, if they want to be able to sell it as, as a whole, they can transfer it to a new location and sell the business?
You're talking, and excuse me, Counselor McRoy, and you mean a new location that's not in Estacada?
A new location where it's allowed to use, yeah.
Okay. Uh, one other thing if I could mention while we're discussing this that hasn't come up yet, but I think is important is that um this uh, the statutes, the marijuana statutes also require this ordinance to be referred to the voters at the next general election in twenty twenty-six, which I think you're all aware of. Um, which would mean that the ordinance would be in effect from the time, if it's adopted, the time it's adopted through the general election until the voters, you know, vote on it. And during that time, the O L C C is prohibited from renewing licenses. And that is how existing processors would be impacted. Uh, in a, in addition to the lack of transferability, anybody who came up for a license renewal during that time would not have their license renewed as a processor. So uh Melanie's right, um, we um my co-council and I have been kind of talking about and brainstorming some other ways to um, maybe help the city achieve its goals, all of its goals um, in potentially different ways that, that stay within the lines of, of what else L, O L C C regulates and what the city can regulate. Um, and we are still in discussions about that. And then we also have some um, general um reactions to some of the threats of, the threats of a taking and things like that. And I guess another overarching thing to keep, keep in mind is that this is a there is a, a federal overlay here that uh doesn't get talked about a lot. And at this time, we're not prepared to really discuss that. We'd like to, you know, think about that aspect a little bit more and perhaps depending on um, the, whether litigation is likely to be filed is, are, are, is the uh language of the executive session statutes, we would have to evaluate some of the comments and see if it's li- likely to be filed.
Just didn't Peter go through this?
Yeah, sort of. I mean, like that, excuse my teneture on this, um, respectfully, I, I do mean that, but I feel like you're coming here and giving us all the ways to push this offer to do this when what we're here to listen and I, I, and I fully appropriate, I fully appreciate everybody's opinion here, but I, I agree with what Councilman McCleary pointed out that, so you're saying that during this, they couldn't transfer a business until after the general election cycle? When the public decided on whether they support this or they don't, whether this works or it doesn't work for them. Right, they couldn't. But in the beginning of this, they could transfer, but they couldn't, they're sorry, they could have their license still, but they can't transfer. But now as we bring another solution, now you're saying, well, no, they can't, they can't renew it either now. So now there's another road bump now that we have a different solution. I'm just trying to understand how all of a sudden there's road bumps, there's these new uh obstacles, if you will, when we spent quite a bit of uh time about this. And then, I, I don't know, I just have some differing questions on that. I, I executive session for more weight, I, I don't know, we've talked about this, this has been pushed, this has been to here. I'm not really interested in another executive session personally, and I'm ready to have a conversation and make a decision as a group personally.
And the, and the difference was just in the, between processors and growers, processors specifically. Do are any of the businesses that are in the park have a renewal that happens between now and the election, the election in twenty-six?
Probably.
Is it an annual renewal?
It's an.
Okay, then they're gonna, okay, got you.
And again, these are not things that are pro- prohibiting the city council from adopting it. These are not, these are not things that make it legally impossible for the city council. I think the intent is just to have a, a clear understanding of the, of the effects of adopting the ordinance, no ma- no matter what happens.
I don't know if you answered McRoy's question, or at least maybe I heard his question wrong. Um, but can they transfer if they have a, a spot in Estacada, their business to a spot outside of Estacada?
Yes.
Okay, so they could still sell the business, so they could still make funds, we wouldn't be ruining their livelihood. Okay.
Correct.
So, on that, the uh tax revenue question. Um, so we have existing cannabis businesses um in, in Estacada now, so doesn't that make us eligible for revenue regardless, or do you have to allow?
You would think that that answer is yes, and it is not. Actually, the, the marijuana statutes are very uh they urge city, they urge local governments to not prohibit any marijuana businesses. And one of the ways they do that is by saying if you prohibit any type of marijuana business, you may not share in the state tax revenue.
You know what that amount was for last year, the annual amount that came in?
Um, this past year it was about seventeen thousand dollars, some change. The two previous years it was sixteen thousand and something. So over time, it adds up, but each year it's not a lot, relatively speaking.
Any more questions, go ahead. Any more?
I just say, I didn't, I didn't mean for this to be confusing. I feel like there's some things that have come up in the past week or so that maybe Peter and I hadn't dug into. Peter hadn't called to our attention as far as like whether um whether someone could continue to operate. We assumed they could. Um, and Peter never, had never shared that that might not be feasible. Um, and so it does kind of change things in that regard. Um, but it's still, it's, it's a question to the council and on how you want to proceed.
Yeah, at this point, I would say if you're finished with the discussions, I think you could move to a motion. If some, if you wanted to.
Just to, to clarify, so I get it in my head. So if this ordinance passes, then existing um businesses would not be allowed to get a license. They, so they would not be able to renew a license.
Right.
Um, so it, it puts them out of business.
Essentially.
At that location.
At that, no, understood. I get that part. I just needed to, because I, I wasn't connecting with. In this, no, I guess, I get that part.
And for clarity, processor versus grower?
Correct, thank you, thank you for that. Uh, existing processors, the producers have their own separate stat- statutory protection. And they would not uh I think uh be subject, they're, they would be ha- be able to have their licenses renewed. And I, I do have to confess and um uh Peter um marijuana regulation is a really, really complicated area of the law. It's kind of like now, like you're a bond lawyer, where you would always have bond counsel come in. And so i- I, I don't think Peter missed anything that uh anyone else would not have also missed. I just wanted to say that.
I was going to say, is there any other way to regulate this other? Not through land use, maybe through business licenses that the city will only issue, say, up to nine or ten business licenses for marijuana production uh processing or retailing total. It, can we do something like that?
So that's one thing that Carrie and I were uh just starting to discuss. Uh, you know, we had sort of three or four different, you know, potential approaches, and that was on the list. And to me, that is similar to how a lot of jurisdictions are regulating short-term rentals. They're not really doing it through their zoning code, but they're saying, we're gonna put a cap on the number of business licenses for this particular activity that we require a business, city business license for, and maybe the cap is the existing number of. That we require a business, city business license for, and maybe the cap is the existing number of processors. Um, and so, but we haven't, we really haven't had a chance. We just started talking about that after we talked on Friday.
Jerry and.
So, one thing that that we've, that we've wanted. That we're, that we're still in the process of trying to do is bring businesses out here. We want people to come out here and br- and start a business in Estacada. From zero employees and grow it to where they have seventy-five employees or more. We want them to do that. And we're taking this away, saying, oh, he can sell his business, just it can't be here. You know, we're taking that away. This guy, you know, the, this one example. Is, you know, did it the right way. And they've been doing it the right way since the beginning. And we're basically taking away. What he's built in Estacada. You know, he he did, he chose to come out here. You know, the these businesses choose to come out here, and that's what we're asking them to do. We're asking other businesses to choose to come out here. Um, and work in our, and start their business or or expand their business in our industrial area. Um, we're asking them to do that. And then now we're taking that away. Um, we're taking that option away from from uh current businesses. And I just can't, I cannot get behind that, so. That's all I got.
It wasn't my intent when I I want to see a transition out of that use in the industrial park. And it was never my intent for a business to. Not be able to operate, continue operating that has made the investment there. Well, I would be curious, like, what date? It's gonna go, if it goes, when it goes to the voters, the voters are gonna decide. And whether. That they vote that they want to keep it here, it's gonna stay here, correct? So ultimately, in in in, when would we need to time this to pass where it wouldn't negatively impact the renewal? Were that, were the processors that, I mean, uh. Do we know how many of the businesses are processors compared to growers? That are operating? Because if we found it like where it was. Just after their renewal, that's going to get them through the election. And then ultimately, the city of Estacada, the the community is going to decide whether that. This is something that they want, that they're going to listen to the, to the produ- the processors and the growers. Or the voice of the other members of the community that are having it negatively impact their business. And I don't. Agree that every one of the businesses down there is a shining light of how to do things right. Um, I don't think they've all been doing their odor control. Um, I think they've been making a lot of changes recently. To come into compliance because they're worried about the inspections. Um, so I don't think that that's true, that everybody is just a shining gem, an example of how to operate a business down there. But. On the same token, it's not, it was not my intent to have like a direct negative impact on the businesses that are currently operating down there. And I'd be open to if it's pushing it two months or whatever the amount of time is. So that it would go through, so they would be able to, I I don't want to shut down a business. I I want to give them an opportunity to move. To if they want to sell the business, I'm not as concerned about the transferability. Aspect of it, if if it's a great business and it's got value to it, and you want to sell that business, and it means that you have to move to a new location to do that, then. I I'm not worried about that, but I don't want to put the burden of literally them not being able to continue operating there. After they've met that, I I don't think that's a fair thing to do. And um, but the the day after that, the very meeting after that, I would like to see this.
We could find that out. Yes, thank you. That that is, the timing aspect is another thing that we had just started talking about as well. So you all are. You know, in lockstep with us. Um, and I do think that that is uh. Information we can find out and come back and uh perhaps time it such that. Uh, the voters would get to decide ultimately.
And we've already reached out to the OLCC and confirmed that they will not renew that license if the zoning has changed? Until it goes to the electorate?
Don't think anyone's reached out to them because their rules are pretty clear that, and they th- they say. This is what happens when a local government adopts a ban. Uh, from that point forward, any existing licensee, the OLCC has to deny a renewal application.
Can someone reach out and specifically ask them, just that, just to make sure?
So when we were talking about this, the the. You know, the complaints were compelling. And fully on board with with the actions we've taken so far. Um, the idea of of, you know, new information. Uh, about not being able to get a license if we have that ordinance passes. And um, that changes. You know, because we grandfathered in some existing businesses and. And knowing that a uh, a yes vote on passing the ordinance as is shuts, basically shuts them down. I'm not good with that. Um. Uh, I think that, you know, if if this, if it goes to a an election and the voter and the citizens of Estacada say that they aren't. Uh, they don't want something like that, uh, then I'm totally fine with it. But um, that wasn't the the thought process when we were going through that stuff. And so. Uh, when we were going through, you know, these ordinance changes, you know, the the um, the. I don't know if the odor um mitigation part is is combined with the the zoning part. If it's all one thing, um, or if they can be severed or or whatever. But uh. Um, at this point, I'm not, I'm not good with with shutting down an existing business um without. Without uh the citizens speaking up.
And I think, uh. Just to add my point of view in here in the end, um, I've been at the beginning of this and where it is right now. I started on the floor way back when, when this was all new and nobody knew what was gonna happen. Uh, I gotta say that a few of the businesses that came in, came in when the industrial park were in serious trouble. There was a time when that industrial park might not have been even been there. Um, because the owner of the industrial was going to lose his bank backing, uh, if things didn't happen. So marijuana came in and marijuana took a place in our, in our society here. And uh, they've been there a while. I can't say that I want to see their businesses suffer in the way that we're talking tonight, that they would lose their licensing. Um, and they wouldn't be able to operate the same business in that location. So I don't think that's really fair to them. And uh, as one of them brought up tonight, they have been a part of our community for a while now. Uh. Marijuana is a different game. It's a totally different game. The state's in a different situation right now. Things are changing all over. It's hard to say what'll happen in the long go, but. I think we should give them the chance with the voters. I think the voters should have a weigh-in on this. And that will determine whether this is something this this community wants or doesn't want. I think that's only fair. Uh, so I think going forward, we should get the information that we need. Uh, for this, to do it the right way and to talk to them and to be at the table altogether going forward. So that would be my recommendation from my point of view.
Listen, uh, my comments, I want to be clear too. Running my comments or in any disrespect, any of you in the audience that have put your sweat equity in your. Blood and your money into your business, that does not not land on me. So my comments about that are not directed to you specifically. My my tenure comes from this, comes from this starting back in two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen with the complaints. Not driven at the specific individuals in this au- audience, I'm saying, but generalizing. The specific complaints and the things that have, the the way that it's impacted business for. The last thing that any of us want to do is take your livelihood. I'm in complete agreeance with you guys on that. And I'm. Like I said, I wanted to discuss. I don't want to put this off for further discussion so that this is a thing that. Three weeks later, you're in here again, hearing what we think about it, surprise to you, right? Like. Let's have these conversations regardless of how they go, regardless of whose feelings or what the outcome is. Like, this is important that we. Don't table this type of stuff anymore and that it gets talked about. So I hope that you'll respect my, my tenure on that. And I appreciate everybody's willingness to talk about it.
So I think what you might want to do is postpone. Uh, postpone this item to the next meeting where. Uh, city staff could come back with some mu- much more firm information about license, number of licenses. Expiration date or renewal dates, excuse me, for those licenses. And then you could, there's no time, there's no hundred and twenty day clock or anything like that ticking on this for, even though it's land use. So, because it's just a legislative amendment. So then you could table it and time it such that. Um, the question, you could adopt the ordinance and it would be referred to the voters and the voters would have the ultimate say. Without doing harm to existing processors.
Okay, I think that's fair.
And directly reach out, just may, and also clarify with OLCC, if there's language that could go into the amendment. That would clarify our intent. In the time between when it's adopted and when the voters get to vote on it. To to not have a negative impact on existing businesses.
All right, so where do we go from here?
So do we need a motion to post?
We do. So we need a motion to post, I'm, I'm. A motion to postpone to a uh certain time.
September eight, September eighth would be the meeting.
I moved to postpone till September eighth.
We have to move out of the uh public hearing and into the council, right? To do that.
Close the public hearing.
Yeah. Okay, we'll now close the public hearing. And reopen the city council now.
I moved to postpone till September eighth.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor. Well, let's do a roll call on this. That'd be better.
Counselor Levins?
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor Dozal?
Yes.
Counselor McRoy?
Yes.
Counselor Metcalf?
Yes.
Counselor Ten Bush?
Yes.
Mayor Drinkling?
Yes. Okay, so it's postponed until we get the proper information, everything is out there and bringing it to the voters rather than just hastily doing something.
Yes, and apologies again that this seems like it came out of the field.
Yeah, no, we appreciate that. We appreciate that. At least the conversation has been had and all sites are sitting at the table. Uh, to listen to what's happening up there. Um, if you'd like to come back up here, we can put in another request form if you want to. Yeah.
I think I had, we just kind of had this discussion a little bit earlier. Avoided what you're surprised. I mean, it feels like it's ongoing and ongoing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, we appreciate that. We appreciate that. Thank you. All right. We will next go on to council business. In council business, I have municipal code audit summary, uh, Winterbrook Planning.
All right, and Grace will also be reporting on this. This is really for information only. Um, she's going to update us on how the code audit is going. Um, as as Winterbrook and her team have been going through the um, our code and. They're not, we're not asking to make any changes tonight. Um, so it's basically. Just to let you know how the process is going. And then um. Any recommended update will be brought to the council in kind of quote-unquote smaller chunks that you'd be able to discuss and. And um, go over at that time. So this is going to be a quick overview. You may want to say, wait a minute, let's dive into that. We don't really want to dive too deep tonight. Um, but because we'll be coming back with more um, information specifically on different topics. But Grace is going to give us a, an overview of how things are going with that summary.
Okay.
All right, thank you. You can see the slide and hear me?
Yep.
Great. Yeah, I'll be quick about this, but you'll also have access to the diagnostic report. So if you feel like diving in. And reviewing any uh specifics about this that is available to you and you can. Read lots about everything. So. Over this spring, Winterbrook Planning assisted the city of Estacada in creating this diagnostic report to look at the. City's Title sixteen, the municipal code, the municipal development code. Because there hasn't really been a comprehensive audit since the creation of the code. There's been lots of updates since, uh, but this was to look at a, take a holistic look at the code and see. What we could do to improve it, make it more usable, user-friendly, and also make sure it complies with. State and federal law, which has been updated a lot since the initial adoption. And also make sure it's responsive to the city of Estacada's goals and the changes in city of Estacada. So the report itself is divided into four general buckets. Uh, the first bucket. Is clear and objective standards. And these are standards that are only related to housing, and they respond to a state requirement. That any land use regulation related to housing basically needs to be clear and objective. Not require discretion or interpretation. And so there's a lot of things in the municipal code that relate to housing. And we looked throughout the code to see what would need to change to make sure that it meets those requirements. Related to that, there's another bucket, which is updates that are required by law. And these can be various. There are certain ones related to. Childcare facilities, that sort of thing, but just making sure the code is updated and compliant with state law. There's another category of updates that we've discussed, we've discussed in the diagnostic report. Which we are calling policy considerations. And these were updates that. Could be done with the code and we relied a lot on the staff's existing knowledge of what were city council priorities. What were areas that could use attention and deliberation and updating? And finally, there's a bucket of administrative and code organization topics, which. Generally are non-substantive, don't require a lot of policy deliberation, but would make the municipal code. Easier to use, more consistent, more more internally consistent and better. So, uh, we identified over a hundred potential code updates. And they range from very simple administrative updates to ones that would require quite a bit of substantial. Policy deliberation. And if you want to get into the code audit report itself, they're organized in tables. That have a reference number and then the code reference. And then we also suggest a phase in which the city should look at updating these code provisions. There's a description of the issue and then there are listed potential actions for the solutions. And regarding phasing, uh, the phase one updates would be most of the updates that are required by state statute. And state law and then higher priority items that are related to code organization. And then phase two would include housing-related items, any remaining clear and objective items. And then medium priority required by law and policy considerations. And then future phases was basically everything else that doesn't need to be updated soon. And those would be tackled by the discretion of the planning commission and the city council. And so. You'll see there's a number of items that could be updated, but it's not necessarily important that they're updated very quickly. So, the next steps are that staff is looking at the phase one code updates and. Will be coming to the planning commission and city council with suggested code updates within the next year, I think, ideally. Also, at the same time, staff has applied for the housing assistance grant from DLCD. And this would include all of the housing-related code updates. So. The diagnostic report has a bunch of phase one updates that are housing-related. And so these would cover all of those phase one updates and any. Phase two updates that are housing-related. And there's quite a few of them because all of the clear and objective. Uh, code updates are housing-related. So. Ideally, the city of Estacada will be getting that housing assistance grant, but we will find out within the next couple of months whether that's the case. And then beyond those two phases, uh, priorities will be set. Uh, by the planning commission and city council and. Will ideally update the development code as staff time and funds allow. And as Melanie mentioned. All of the code updates would be legislative amendments and they would be seen by the planning commission and city council and need to be approved by both. So. There, that was a very quick overview, but as I said, the whole diagnostic report is available to review at your leisure. And I can also take any questions you have now.
Hey, any questions for her on this?
Any questions for her on this? Well, we thank you, I don't have any questions, you have any questions for?
No, I will say I'm not a planner, so I'm really thankful that this work is going on. And that we do have people on staff who are recommending this because having over a hundred revisions, I heard Missy grow a little bit. Yeah, um and so I'm really glad that we're doing this and um we'll try to piece it apart, but keep moving it forward so that. Um you know, it's kind of, it seems long term to me, but we'll get it, we'll get there too.
Yeah, the she you referenced housing grants, uh what housing grants have we gone after, is this part of the thrive thing, is this separate? You know, I keep circling back to this, but I keep hearing about housing grants and things related to technical riding or things with development, but in that. Is there?
This particular grant is, what was that grant that we, what's the name of it exactly?
Housing Assistance Grant.
It's to the Department of Land and Community Development. For paying for the, paying for the.
This code update, so it's not actually to pay for housing, it but it helps us.
I know, I under- I understand that, but it's related to development, housing, that's what I'm saying with another grant, so but with the grant, I'm just coming back. I would like to hear more grant opportunities presented, that's all I'm saying. I'll leave that alone, but I'm just curious about other grants that we're going for that were, does would parks fall into Title sixteen at all? On code stuff, cuz we're talking about applying for, I'm just saying, we're we're listing what we're going after and it's all related to development and stuff, I would like to see. Tenure and the codes that are related to things that the community has asked us to appropriate.
We applied through the Oregon Parks and Rec Department for the um for a grant to help us with our Parks Master Plan Update that's coming up. We should find out in September whether we get that grant, which I'm pretty confident about, so we'll be reporting back to you on that. And that would be real more in relation to parks and planning for those.
I'm just, I was asking for clarity, this I promise not.
Alright, next.
Okay, yeah, next up, thank you, Grace.
Very informative, thank you.
Yes, I I'll leave if you don't need me for anything else.
Alright.
Think we're good.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yay, next on council business, I have ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero zero nine. And ordinance amending Estacada Municipal Code Sections three sixteen one twenty. To provide greater flexibility and allowance for system development charge credits and declaring an emergency.
Okay, at the July twenty eighth meeting, council discussed the city's S D C credit limitations and indicated that. You would like to have greater flexibility in providing those credits, and so this ordinance will allow for that at the council's discretion on a case by case basis. Do you wanna add anything to that?
We also talked about the idea of the. We also talked about the idea of the, looking at all of our options, understanding the word moratorium came up in a legal, in a legal sense. That that would be an option, assuming that we don't have, under the pretense, we don't have funding if we don't raise S D Cs. So I'm just curious about the follow up on that portion of this conversation before we proceed.
Right, you had, you had mentioned more the word moratorium or Kurt, I think mentioned the word moratorium. Typically, a moratorium um is a challenge because it's not something you can just say, oh, it's a moratorium, we're stopping now. It means that you have to, you're usually being um, I don't know if you wanna explain that, but it's a, it's a.
Uh so it's some in uh that has to be declared, it has a short timeframe, a hundred and twenty days. And the city has to show it's making substantial progress and it has a plan for achieving. Uh overcoming the problems that the moratorium was declared for, so typically if a city is gonna declare a moratorium, there's some pre-planning. Quite a bit of pre-planning that goes, goes on behind the scenes before the moratorium is actually declared. So that the hundred and twenty day timeframe can be met, it it can be extended as long as the city is showing significant progress. But it's, it's quite complicated, um not, not anything that can't be done. But we would want to like tee that up, I think.
So this isn't like, uh let's just pop it down like a speed bump comment, I'm I'm asking specifically for. Like I I'm trying to understand when I'm asking this, because we're asking for the options that would pertain to that, right? That word was brought by the engineer saying that this is what would happen, this is the other alternative. And it wasn't a happily stated thing, and I'm not saying that that is even our objective, I just, I want to understand fully what all of our options are. And if it's possible, then I think that this. Board, this governing body should have a conversation because our constituents have sat up here and asked us. How to better manage growth in this community, and I don't, now I. Struggle with this because it's managed growth, I mean, this needs to be clear to the community, we're not trying to stop growth, legally, we cannot. Right, that's not my objective here, but if there is options to manage it or to appropriate it a little bit slower, so it's more powerful for our community. I think we owe them all options on the table, and you're telling me that that is a possibility, option, it might be difficult, but it is doable.
It's a possibility, I don't believe it would actually slow growth, the the thing that causes the more, the thing that causes the moratorium is what slows the growth. Because a um it means that we're not keeping up with the infrastructure that's required. And so um it would, yes, we'd have to have a, but we would have to have a plan in place to get that moving forward. Or um it it causes complications. However, um this, I think what this plan, this ordinance for um the S D Cs would help manage growth. Because it's not like we're gonna say, yeah, we're gonna put all that, we're gonna pay cash out to in to developers. I mean, there's options like that where you can really say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna cover all this, we're gonna pay cash if it's over and above, so you'll be made fully whole. And this is not exactly what we're seeing, we're giving you options that you can look at on a case by case basis where they could get these credits. Um and then they can use them as they build, or they could sell them to other developers who might use them, but that would be probably at a discounted rate. Um or we could track them and they could, um you know, we could say, hey, we're gonna, we'll pay you back, but only fifty percent of what we collect so that we keep some cash. So this is kind of a management versus just saying, um you could be much more pro developer, I think. And I think this manages that back without actually getting us into that legal term of moratorium.
Except for then Kurt said he's gonna have to bring it back to us again to adjust it again, that's, that was my point on this.
Right, he did, so that was one of the, in the consent agenda, he presented the, um you and I didn't get to talk in depth about all these things. But that was um the resolution in the consent agenda adjusts the amount of um of the S D C for stormwater. And when we finish the stormwater plan over the next several months, it might come back again um with a different modification, but those are simple modifications to make. So does that answer the question?
And I think it'd be really helpful if Kurt maybe clarified his statement, cuz I, when when I, what I heard from his statement wasn't what. What I think you heard from it, so it would just be helpful for Kurt to clarify his statement. Just, I mean, I, what I heard him say was that if you run the city really poorly manage the city's system development charges. Where you don't have money in the account and you run into a one in a forty year situation where they're giving the credit back. Happened once in forty years in that very specific situation that then you would be heading into a moratorium. It wasn't like an optional, like you're gonna trigger a moratorium because you decide you wanna do a moratorium, that's not what I heard, I I. What I heard him say was, if it's poorly managed, the S D C fund is poorly managed and bankrupt, and you don't have the money as a city. Because you haven't managed it properly to put in infrastructure for your city, at that point, you're you're gonna, so you basically. Poorly manage yourself into a moratorium is is what what I heard him say, and it may be clarification on that. Cuz maybe, cuz that sounds really different than our understands, I'd I'd like to hear a an explanation.
I didn't see anything about enforced moratorium, but he said it as something that that is something that. This is a byproduct of what we, but he also said that he would have to come back to us again with an adjusted number, not this one. But another one.
That was on the the S D C that we voted for in the.
No, that's on this right here, he's saying he, to make it right, we are going to face this very thing again, coming up with the current development. It's going on in Castadia, or that's uh coming up with the Far days and the frozen park, he said. Pipeline, we are looking at that exact same situation and he will be back to address.
He did say that that would be the next time we see this is when.
And then he said, if we don't, I will have to bring it back to you, and that's where he made his comment about the once in four.
Yeah, I will ask him to clarify that.
Tom about the rest of the oversized pipe. Not bringing the S K C, the credit part.
But, yes, but he was saying in reference to that, this is where we're gonna see this exact situation over again.
He did say that.
But this ordinance. Does temporarily fixes it for this situation, but not for the.
This this ordinance fixes it.
For, for, no, this this ordinance goes into the city, goes into the into the city charter and it fixes it. It might not fix it for the that next development because this might not. How is that a fix?
Because the, because it might not be in place by the time that that happens.
That's not what he said, I I'll 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 say it again, he said, I will have to bring it back to you guys again to make the adjustment for that cost as well. You're going to see this again when they do the pipe for the next.
And this is so that when that happens, when it comes back again, this gives the council the mechanism to deal with it. This is the solution for it.
That's what he's meaning is.
Cuz isn't, isn't this being that when it, when it comes, it's gonna come to the council, the council decides whether they wanna give them credits or not, extra credits or not?
Yes, because the council said that they would like to be the deciding factor on on a case by case basis, so that's. I'm sorry, I didn't remember exactly what his conversation was, but I think that's what he meant, it will come back to you again. Uh because this, if this goes into place, the council will have to be making.
Okay, but that gives us the tools.
Yes, but so, I asked specifically for this information, I'm not gonna let it go just because we don't wanna talk about it. I wanna make that clear.
No, we do wanna talk about it, but I'm just not sure what the question is.
Yeah, well, let's get the clarification from Kurt first, so we're talking about.
You know, I heard him say uh one in, o- once in forty years or something like that. Um and but I also heard him say, you're gonna see it again, and you know, I don't think that we've seen this kind of development in. In forty years or what have you, so it's, you know, the chances of this coming up again and again and again, I understand this was, this is giving them the flexibility. To deal with that issue, but you know, taking a a extreme look, what if we're. You know, hypothetical situation, what if we're starting to, you know, cut six figure checks to all these different um developers? Uh because that's the option that that um they decide to do, um that's kind of scary.
Well, then we have the the fact that that puts it in our control to decide that, where I think that will come into play. Because I'm not gonna write a check for every, I'm thinking Harry that decides to build an S K A, that's a risk you take as a developer. So these are questions that I think that answered that, when he, they, we gave us a tool right here to say yay or nay on that basis. And that's why I wanted the control to make that choice, um and I think that this does that, I think that's what this was all about, so.
You're comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that because that puts it in our lane, as long as it's in our lane and we can make this choice, I feel comfortable with the taxpayers, we'll see that we're being responsible.
I my my comments, I I just, I really want to speak clear, it's not, I I don't have a problem with the outlet, I want to look at the long term solution. I don't wanna repetitively come back to something once a year and make big adjustments, oh, it was, we told you ten percent was what we needed. Or we needed ten thousand more on this fund for this, or we need to raise it five hundred, that's what we keep doing to our community, and they are telling us. They are telling us, we are tapped, we are tapped, there's people leaving the community cuz they can't afford to be here anymore, ask me how I know. Cuz I hear about it from being in the streets, and I would encourage all of you to do that and to listen to the people that are on a fixed income in this community with these decisions in pact. Now, that being said, my tenure on this, I do support that. I like the idea of having options and stuff like that as well, and that you have to have buy into this community before we'll even consider it. Come and do right by our community and our citizens here in this city, before you ask us for any kind of favor on helping you, that's how it should be. Take care of ours and we'll take care of you, that's how this community is anyway, right, in nature. So I don't think anybody argues with that, but what they are gonna get sick of is us telling them out of one side of our mouth that we're looking out for what's best for them. But then every second that we can, we're raising something else on them, even if it's two dollars or it's a five dollar a month or.
But this ordinance isn't talking about raising anything, it's not about price, this isn't talking about any, any extra, extra added price to the taxpayers. This ordinance is only talking about giving us this body. The flexibility to make those decisions, and it's not talking about raising any kind of pricing. So that, you know, the conversation that you're having should be at a different, a different time, because that has nothing.
Cuz it has nothing to do with this ordinance. But it does, cuz he didn't, did he not say in this ordinance, he needs to raise the price? Yes, he did, he said the S D C's cost has to go up. That was in the previous one that we did, that we decided during council business. And in this, he said we are going to have to. Anyway, it it's in totality.
Give or take, but you know, at the end of the day, I understand what you're saying with the people in our, our city. Uh having expectations, we keep making them promises, are we gonna keep those promises, is not what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying that, are we gonna look at all options or just what's convenient because it's easy?
No, no, I think we do the best we can at holding value in our community for our citizens, I think where we're. We're gonna run into things because the the world changes, people, taxes change, the the, what the state mandates off of us. And what, you know, i- is above our, 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 our responsibility. We cannot stop taxes from going up or rates from going up because everywhere around us is doing it. We can hold off as long as we can, that's why you're here, out of all the people that could have been elected in this city, each and every one of you were put here for a reason. And that reason was to do the best you can to hold that back as long as you can, I get that, but that's why we're here. And yes, it's not going to change anytime fast, and we're, we're gonna make promises and we're gonna try to hold to those promises. But there's gonna come days where that's impossible to do.
I agree, I don't think you can make everyone happy.
And hopefully, we'll have the answer of why we can't, and they'll understand as well, and if not. They will have the opportunity to take us out of these seats and put somebody else there that can, if that is possible. But that's a choice for them to make, and I understand where you're coming from, the frustration, believe me, I got it, after as many years I've been here, frustration is my middle name. You know, but we have to be real here, we cannot promise the world on a platter. We can only do what we can do, seriously, as an elected official, we can only do what we can do. And that's going to be the case from here to the end of our days, but we will do that, we will fight that fight, that's what we do. So I understand your passion, I do, and I'm glad you brought it to the table, so thank you for that, but going forward.
So wanna call out that this ordinance is being adopted as a, an emergency, which doesn't mean that it's a. It, that can be misconstrued, um and we don't want, I don't want you to think that it's it's emergency that um there's something going wrong. Which is kind of what an emergency applies, but that would allow um us to adopt it, it's, it was posted a week before this meeting, which is required. And then if it's adopted tonight, it would go into effect immediately, rather than having a second reading and then waiting a month to go into effect. And that way we could start uh working on these um alternatives with the developers that are in these situations right away. Um I don't know if you wanna say anything else about that, but.
So you've heard the fact that this motion needs to be put through and get it started, and we're gonna um try to do that right here. So if I can get a motion on the floor.
It's on page fifty eight.
I moved to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero zero nine. And ordinance amending Estacada Municipal Code Section three dot one six dot one twenty. To provide greater flexibility in the allowance for system development charge credits and declaring an emergency. Second.
First and second, all those in favor, let's do a roll call on that, please.
Counselor Blevins? Counselor Dozel? Counselor McElroy?
Not voting.
Counselor Metcalf? Counselor Ten Bush? Mayor Drinkling?
Okay, uh we are at the next uh citizen and community group comments, I have none in front of me, are there any online? No, uh mayor, council reports and comments, uh Blevins, let's start off with you tonight.
I was uh across the street at Grace Crossing this Sunday, and I noticed that the construction area had sprinklers going on. And and I walked over there and there was no, I don't know if they're underground, but it was, it looked like it was coming right out of the uh. Fire hydrant with no.
No meter?
No meter, and uh.
just running, it's a hundred degrees out. So I I ran over to Capinella to see if the uh green space over there was at least getting water. And there wasn't. So I don't know what's going on there. But the construction companies are getting plenty of water. And the people who are wanting and hoping for and asking for water don't seem to be getting it. So just pointing that out, observation from yesterday. Um other than that, I don't, I don't have anything. Thanks for the uh vibrant debate today. I like that. Um, and they're gone now, but thank you for coming and voicing your opinions.
You know, vibrant dialogue is is uh um stimulating and and uh effective uh right along with letting someone finish their sentence. And so I would uh encourage everyone to uh uh let that happen. Um Secondly, you know, I did appreciate the comments regarding regarding dialogue uh that we heard from the community uh about the cannabis um uh issue. I would like everyone to remember though that um I remember the one business owner out there saying that they'd been having dialogue for seven years and nothing had happened. And so we took action and 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 now here we are having dialogue. Uh, so it's a two way street. Um, and you know, if the city decides in an election that they want to be a cannabis free city, then you know, I'm fine with that. That's what the community wants. And then that's what we do. Uh, next is the traffic, 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 traffic. Uh, it comes up every meeting. And in fact, when you guys were talking about the the motorized scooters, I've seen a couple of times now, this one kid coming down fourth hill and he's flying. And it looks so fun um until until down you go. And so I I'm very interested in in uh what the laws are on on that kind of thing. The kids having a great time and and man, is that that potential disaster. Otherwise, finally, um, thank you so much. Um, great job today and and uh uh like I said, out at the the um uh groundbreaking, uh you planned it so well to the odors wafting through the the crowd. Uh, that was, that was very funny. Um uh and just reinforced a need for for that growth. Uh, but thanks for all the work. Thanks for all the work. And that's it.
Good, great. Thank you.
Yeah, hey, thanks for that. Thanks for uh all you guys do. I know how much time you put into this. Because you spend forty five minutes when it should take us ten minutes talking about stuff with me when I'm able to answer the phone to go to the meeting. So I do really appreciate your thoroughness and including me on especially if the gaps that I don't have. I really appreciate all the staff for your help in that. And for the the members of the community that came out and spoke their piece tonight, I love that. I don't, I don't care if it's in the favor of what I think or goes against what I think personally think. I don't really care. It's, I love hearing that you have an opinion for yourself and that you care enough to be here and to speak it. And I want to see more of it. So please come differing, it doesn't matter. Please come and share what we can do better. That's how we learn and that's how we grow. So uh Jerry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I apologize for any of my unprofessional cantor in that dialogue. Uh, my passion for this community is fiery at times, but I promise you that I respect you just the same as anyone else up here. And I know that's likewise, that's why you argue right back with me and that this is healthy. Personally, this is healthy. So anyway, thank you for everybody being there, being here tonight. And and thank you for reaching out and taking the time to walk in our community and to meet some of the community members that were out there and see like the different things going on with joggers and stuff like that. That was really cool for you to get to see it in person. And I hope that the city will see or that the community will see that and see that, you know, your leadership, the people that we told you that we trust and that we believe can do this job, that they're out there and that they were seen looking at it and coming up with solutions. So our confidence is still there. It's highly at that. So I just want to make that clear and say thank you.
Well, thank everybody that came out tonight, uh even the people that are already gone. And thanks staff for putting together the meeting. Um, I would encourage everyone before we have the conversation on traffic, I've been doing a lot of research on that. Reached out to a couple of traffic engineers trying to come up with solutions for the speeding problem in Estacada and what delivers the most results and what the focus point of that conversation should be. So I would just encourage everyone to do that. Um, see what the the proven research is for what's going to calm down traffic, what's going to slow it down. Um, what I've come up with in in that is a design of streets is the number one thing that's going to reduce speed. The tighter a street feels, the slower people are going to go. And like seventh or eighth down the list was speed limit. So the the knee jerk reaction was we're going to reduce the speed in the entire city to twenty miles per hour when we have designed streets that are designed as major collectors to do at least twenty five, some streets thirty five, forty, forty five. That's the the design of the street is what's going to drive the traffic behavior. A speed limit sign is not going to drive behavior. And and I just want to look at heavy enforcement. I want to validate every comment from the public, all the members of the community from Campinella and other places that came out and they're upset. And I hear them on that. And I think that we need to come up with a quick solution for it. And something, the quickest thing I think is heavy enforcement, bigger penalties, progressive tickets. And that's something we could be getting going right away. Don't have to wait and have a discussion about that because I don't want to see a kid get hurt. But I just say, I just recommend that everyone spend the time to do some research on what's effective at delivering the solution you want and not what's going to make people feel better, but what's actually going to save that kid from getting hit. What changes we're going to make that's actually going to save a kid from getting hit as opposed to what's going to make us feel good when we drive down the road. And so I just encourage everyone to do that.
Great.
So usually I start my time by thanking staff, but I, there's something more important. Um, I want to apologize to Counselor Metcalf. What I had to say could have waited till you were done talking. I did not need to step on your, step on your uh, what I had to say could have waited till you were done talking. I apologize to you. I apologize to the mayor for uh speaking out of turn. I apologize to this council for my behavior. Um we don't need to go back to where we were three years ago. Um, that's not what we're about. So um, I will refrain from doing that in the future. Um, and thank you Counselor Duzon for pointing out my, I appreciate that. I needed that, I needed that. Cause I don't want to get back, I don't want to go back to where we were. Um, thank you, staff, for all your hard work. Um, I know that there's a a a lot of work that goes into um, these packets and every ordinance. And you know, I know if tonight, it might feel like we don't, we don't think you put enough work into them, but we know that you put that you guys have put a lot of work into it. Um, I just don't want to make a fast decision. I want to make the right decision. Um, and you know, just it, to me, it seemed like the ordinance on the um, you know, the ordinance we spoke on earlier that we postponed till um the next meeting. Um, I think to use Counselor Metcalf's words, I think that we're um, well, well, how did you say it? Oh, I don't know. I think we're, I think we're taking the easy way out on that one. Um, I think that there's a better, I'm not using Counselor Metcalf's words, I'm using mine. Um, I think there's a, there's got to be a better way to go about that. That's not going to cost someone who wants to do business in Estacada their business in Estacada. Um, especially if they're the they're the ones that are doing it right. Um, I mean, he, the the gentleman even said that the the they bring out other businesses to his businesses, his business to show them how to do it right. Um I just, I think that there's more work that needs to go into that. And I I look forward to seeing what you guys present. But thank you all. Thank everybody for coming out. I'm really excited that we have Hannah Strobel on board as our communications person. Um that's going to be, that's going to be something really big for the city of Estacada, a huge improvement. So thank you all. Hey. Uh, I want to thank the city for putting together the sewer plant, uh extravaganza. That was pleasant. Uh nice and hot, stinky. Um, but it was a grand day and it was good to see everybody out there. And it's good to have it on the ground, finally. Thank legal for coming out and having land use legal in the room. Uh, I think it proves a point, you know, going forward on choosing a new legal team. The idea that we had two people working with us in the last few meetings who were experts in their own field, but giving us a different perspective, I thought was impressive. It gives us a better view of what we're dealing with and somebody who knows that particular part better than the other. So for me, that was a win win and it'll show us where we're going forward in the legal team that we pick, where we need to focus our attention. Last but not least, passion. One of our counselors just brought that to the table. I have strived many, many, many years on this council as a counselor and as a mayor to see the passion that is in this room. It has taken me a very long time to see this kind of passion in this room. But it is now here. All of you should be very happy with yourselves on how you present yourselves going forward to the public in our city. They see what you're all about. They know what you're all about. They put you here. They know you have passion and they know you care about them. So whatever you do going forward, if some days don't turn out quite the way you would hope they would, or we can't meet the promise we made because everything around us is changing. Don't give up. Don't think that they don't still care that you're there. It's just, we can't hold everything in a certain position in our city. We can't tell everybody that tomorrow is going to be perfect. And everything is going to work out and you're not going to have to pay more taxes. And this is, because we all know that's not true. We can try to slow it down. We can try to do the job we were put here to do, but we can never stop it from happening. So ultimate promises are really hard to make in this position. And there's days we're going to come up short. But don't give up on that. Because there will be many of them and they will be hard to take sometimes. But you're all doing a wonderful job. So keep up that good work and don't give up on that. Because I need each and every one of you here to make the city work. You do a great job. So thank you on that. And this meeting is adjourned.